The city council meeting and before we do that, I just want to inform everybody if you want to speak during the council meeting, please use the raise your hand feature on your tablet or computer if you can. And if not, just raise your hand and hopefully we'll see that to be able to get to you. So we appreciate that and thank you. Now, if you'll please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can I have roll call city?
Counselor Dunsmere.
Here.
Counselor Gates. Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here, thank you, Sadie. Okay, we are at the first citizen and community group comments and I have Sherri Andros on the line. Is she on there anywhere?
I'm bringing, I'm bringing her in right now.
Okay.
By the way, it's Andres.
Andres, well, you know, I'm testing it.
Thanks, John.
You bet. And here you are.
Mom, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I have the video phone on, so if you speak, I'm gonna look over there. I didn't want to miss anything. So I'm here today as the owner of the Casadero. We have been hit really hard in Estacada as the prayer said. Not only the Casadero, but I think all of our businesses are affected. We never caught up from the fire. The fire really took us down quite a bit. And then we got hit with COVID closures right after that. And unfortunately, the government is not coming around at this point. I've tried grants. I don't qualify because I didn't take more than $100,000 of PPP money. I've tried loans. Those aren't going very well. It's really hard to loan to a restaurant that didn't make any money in 2020 because of COVID. I tried SBA, I've tried everything and I really am looking forward to 2021. All I need to do is have my doors open. That's all. We open our doors, the Casadero is doing great. We close our doors, we're not doing so great and it's not just the Casadero, it's all of us. So I was just coming today to see if there's any opportunity for the city of Estacada to work to help the restaurants or the small businesses in Estacada. I was looking forward, my high hope was the governor had set aside $55 million. And then I just found out a couple of days ago, that's going to equate to $1,500 for us businesses. And that's, that's a half a day at the Casadero. Sam wants his lease. Weird, my employees want to get paid. My food bill is over 7,000 now and they're, they've told me they're not going to deliver anymore. If I can't come up with some funds to pay them, it's getting really serious between the fires and COVID. And I just wanted to see if maybe you guys can talk about if there's a fund, you know, to help us with some grant money. That would be absolutely amazing. So that's all.
Well, Sherri, we thank you for bringing this to our attention. We really do. And we know you're hurting. We know a lot of places are hurting. And I think tonight, we're going to be talking about some different opportunities, hopefully. And we'll get into some ways that maybe we can help. And hopefully, we can come up with an answer to this problem, at least to the best of the city's ability. I know this stretches way beyond that and there's a lot more that needs to be done. But I'm hoping that we can come up with something that might work. Does anybody have questions for Sherri before I let her off? Anybody? No, so thank you, Sherri. We appreciate you and we will look into this.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. I do want to disclose that Sherri is my mom. But on behalf of all businesses in Estacada, I know that everybody is struggling. And I, I would love to see our city having a conversation in the very near future about if there are any funds that we can pull to provide some relief to the small businesses, especially the restaurants and any hospitality industry that we have here in the city. Because I do not want to see our restaurants and our hospitality businesses go away because of what has happened this year. I'm not talking on behalf of my mom or the Casadero. I would love to see the businesses in Estacada, all of Estacada thrive. And I would love to have that conversation come the beginning of the year, absolutely.
I appreciate that, Katie. Anybody else before we let her go? Okay, thank you, Sherri. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, I'll move on to the consent agenda now. All of you have had a chance to read over the consent agenda. I'm figuring, yeah. Are there any questions or anything that needs answering on that consent agenda that you'd like to answer right now? No? Okay, I'm asking for a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as written. Sadie, do we need to bring in the gentleman for the proclamation? Or is that, is that down the line a little bit?
Yeah.
He's coming up. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda passes, thank you. Okay, moving right along. We are at Proclamations Council, Presentations and Guest Presenters. And tonight, we have PGE, the Grid Reliance and Emergency Preparedness Presentation. Maria Pope, is she on the line?
Yes, there's several on the line I'm bringing in right now.
Excellent, thank you.
Whoops. Brought the wrong one in. Sorry.
There we go.
Maria, good to see you.
Hello. Nice to see you. I think we have some of my companions.
We got the whole gang.
We do have a whole gang.
All right. Randy, how are you, sir?
I'm good, Mayor. How are you?
Good. Nick, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in quite some time. You guys have been busy, huh?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah.
Guys.
It's good to see you. Okay.
Okay, I think I have everybody here.
Everybody's on there, okay.
We have, we have one more, a fellow named Bill Messner.
I'm here, Maria.
Are you there? Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay.
Eric is going to kick us off.
All right.
Thanks, Sadie. Good evening, Mayor Drinkwine, members of City Council and City Staff. Thank you very much for making time on your busy agenda tonight for us to join you. I'm Eric Underwood, your local government affairs contact at PGE. And it's an honor to be here with you tonight. And we're very, very grateful for your time, so very much appreciated. Before we get started this evening, I wanted to take a quick moment to introduce you to our presenters. Joining me are PGE's President and CEO, Maria Pope. Our Director of Wildfire Mitigation and Resiliency, Bill Messner. And our Director of Renewable Operations, Nick Luth. And Maria and Bill will be sharing, Maria, Nick and Bill will be sharing with you tonight on our focused work around our community involvement, resiliency, emergency preparedness and learning from the impacts to the West Side Hydro Facilities during the Riverside Fire Event. As you'll hear later tonight, over 60 PGE employees live in Estacada or in the surrounding Estacada area. And we think that just might be the highest per capita city our employees call home of any one of our 51 cities.
I like that.
So with that, I'd like to turn it over to someone who really needs no introduction for you folks. And that's Nick Luth, our Director of Renewable Operations. He'll talk with you a little bit about our community involvement in Estacada. So Nick, over to you.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor Drinkwine and Council Members. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'll first start by saying, relationships are not formed in crises. I remember traveling to the East Coast with Millie Wagner and Bob Morrissey, the Fire Chief at the, at the time in Cockmas County for FEMA emergency management simulation. Also spent years working with your teams on dam safety, emergency planning and exercises. And participated in a community leadership program with Sadie Mayne and Brett Dodgerill. Together, we've managed through the pit fire, Riverside Fire, flooding from Mother Nature and flooding because of us. We hit your water main downtown. I also remember about four or five years ago, we had a power outage at the start of a football game, Estacada against Malala. It was the Battle of the Undefeated. So not our finest moments, but you gave us the opportunity to remedy those and learn from those events. We're thankful to have your, your trust and your, have such a great partnership with the city. We're excited about the past and upcoming collaborations that include undergrounding the overhead lines in downtown and, and potentially expanding on that, increasing reliability by adding a new redundant feeder to serve the city and the work on the Lakeshore Project. I'm proud to say we've been serving Estacada for the last 113 years with our hydro facilities, our Estacada area parks and our strong community partnerships. As Eric said, PG has, has been honored to be Estacada's partner, serving more than 3,700 community members, over 160 Estacada businesses. Through taxes and franchise fees, we're pleased to play an important role with Estacada. And we have nearly 700 PG employees living in Cockmas County with 60 employees and their families calling home at Estacada. Even more important than all these things are the common interests we share as essential service providers. You care about safe and reliable energy. You have concern about the resiliency of your city and the ability to respond quickly in a disaster. You want energy prices to be affordable so that businesses can thrive and those residents that are struggling can keep their lights on. And you want to be a clean energy leader. We share these same goals. Now I wanted to turn it over to Maria Pope, our CEO and President, to share our plans towards a clean energy future.
Thank you, Nick. And thank you, Mayor, and the entire council for having us here this evening. And I'm sorry that we can't be in person. I will tell you that Nick and I were working very closely together during both the pit fire when the water main, when we dug through your water main. And I can remember Nick telling me about it and I said, we'll get down there. And that's because when, when tough things happen, we pull together and we try and make them better. We've been working on wildfire resiliency. We've been working on dam safety. We've been working on reinvesting in our hydro operations in your area. As Nick said, they date back over 100 years and they needed some tender loving care and some significant investment dollars. We hope to leave those facilities for the next 100 years of Oregonians who will continue to benefit from them and live in your communities. Thank you so very much for the partnership and for your trust in us. As we move forward, we know that Oregonians want clean energy. They want to take the carbon out of their energy supply and they actually want to use more electricity for electric vehicles, for electric heating. There's a real call to action, I think particularly during this COVID period of time, when we've seen a little bit less smog in inner cities across the world. And all customers want us to make sure that we are performing. During COVID, we actually have reduced our planned outage time that impacts customers by 50%. So we've used this time of pandemic to actually improve our operations. We've accelerated through greater uses of technology. We've partnered with you all and with many others, expanding our ability to work in the right of way, as well as with blanket permits. All of those things collectively make an enormous amount of a difference in our ability to be efficient and to serve you. So as we move forward, we're going to continue focusing on these areas, but also, let's go to the next slide, investing in a smart and integrated grid. What's really important as people are working from home, and we expect this to continue, that we're able to recover very quickly from any disruption, that we're able to integrate renewable energy, whether it be when the wind is blowing and the sun is shining or any other future technologies that may come. And that we're able to do so in a cost effective manner. We know that price matters. And so being smart and integrated is how we're able to keep energy prices low for all of you and for all of our customers. This past couple of years, we've worked tremendously to build out our resiliency and be prepared for, in many instances, the unthinkable. So I'd like to turn it over to Bill Messner, who has not only leading us through wildfires, but many other disasters and has spent a lot of time focusing and helping us be better prepared so that we know that none of our equipment contributed to any of the wildfires that took place in Oregon, even though over 500 acres burned in our areas. Our power lines were de-energized and in many instances, we shut off power across our system. So with that, Bill, let me turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Next slide, please. Mayor, thank you for having us today and Council Members, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. On, on this slide, you can see that there's many threats that we are facing as a company and a community. And I want to briefly touch to each one of these and then I'll dive a little bit deeper in the next slides on a couple of the topics. But first and foremost, the global pandemic, which three years ago, four years ago, I don't think any, any of us would ever imagine what we're facing today. But with that being said, Maria touched on a lot of things already, which we have done in order to run the business effectively and efficiently for our customers. We have maximized technology to keep the business running, at the same time, making sure that our services that we provide to our customers are still there. They depend on us now more than ever as they work from home, they teach from home and they care from home. And so we have leveraged our own working from home and our own employees to do that while minimizing the risks that our field workers that have to come to the office on a daily basis so we don't expose them. Because we have an essential service that we have to provide to all of you. We take a lot of pride in that. In addition to that, we have emerging storms, something I think we can, mostly all of us can relate to. It's kind of this traditional way of first response or resiliency. And we have plans that we have in place that we exercise, test. And we have relationships that we have called mutual aid agreements in order for us to be there. And we invest in our grid to make sure it can withstand storms. And again, I'll dive into that a little bit. And with all of that, we have global warming, that is a trend that's facing all of us around the world, like the global pandemic. And that's hence the wildfires that we're seeing become more and more severe. And so we recognize that and we're leaning very hard in that. We have invested lots in our grid from a, you know, iron ductile pulls, fiberglass crossarms, tree wire, as well as looking at things from a risk assessment, making sure that we invest our money wisely for our customers as they invest in us to make sure that we're there for them reliably. But unfortunately, we got to think about cyber and physical attacks in the world of terrorism that, again, is real threats that are there that we have to be prepared for. So we invested highly, heavily in cyber. I'll talk a little bit more about that and we're investing heavily in our physical security with a new investment in our access control systems and new cameras so we can have better intelligence of what's going on across our full grid. And with all those things that we face, we cannot lose sight of the fact that we have a Cascadia earthquake event that a lot of people say it's when, not if. And we need to be prepared for that for our customers. And adding to this whole complexity is that we're part of a regional grid, much 11 states, including Canada. So when other parts of this grid get impacted, we have to be flexible in how to respond to that as well. So with that, now I'd like to dive deeper into each one of these categories. And if anybody has any questions, please just speak up and we'll, we'll definitely address them as they come up. Next slide, please. So as I stated earlier, I was going to dive a little bit deeper into each, not in each one of these, but some specific ones. But this one specifically is about storm preparedness. The image that you see there is, I just want to show, share with all of you that we have a planned response and how when storms happen, how do we get the grid back up and running and who do we start with first to get it going? I won't go through that image, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. But, you know, part of this is preparing and part of this effort is tree or vegetation management, our trimming, a tree trimming program. This kind of give you a scale of what we've done in that space. This year, in the year that was impacted by COVID, we're still able to trim 3,200 miles of line, distribution and transmission. The year before that was 3,800 and the year before that was 3,000. Our upcoming years, 2021 and 2022 will be 4,205,000 miles of line. And that is, we have 29,000 miles, this will give you a scale of what we're doing in order to keep this grid reliable. We do year-round inspections. We are looking for things that could fail ahead of time, not after they fail. And we're fixing those when we see those things. Mentioned a little bit about grid hardening already. Remember that was the iron poles and fiberglass crossarms. We have preparedness messages for our customers on our, on our websites. And we do outreach to make sure our customers are prepared when things do happen. Our crews are ready 24/7, 365 days a year. This is not a business that we get to say, you know, we're closed for the day. We are never closed and we're always there for our customers. With all of that being said, we have to have resources. And that is this last item here called mutual aid agreements. So we have those in place now in our region. And this is really a, an agreement that really goes across the country. We will be on calls where utilities on the East Coast need help from us or asking for help in terms of resources for people. We have that same reciprocal response for us if we ever need that. We also have in place agreements with our service providers so we can get those individuals to help us as well. And in the storms, the firestorms this September, we exercised both of those agreements to make sure that we can restore that grid as quickly as possible. Next slide, please. So wildfire prevention and response. The image here is, I just want to talk about that real quickly, but you'll see the different colors there and what they are. Tier one, well, tier two and tier three locations, elevated and extreme. The yellow being elevated and extreme being the darker orange color. And we're fortunate in our territory that we really don't have our assets in those areas. However, we did have a location, what we call the Mount Hood Corridor, when we did our risk assessment. That's what we identified as that PSPS location that we talked a little bit earlier about, the Public Safety Power Shut Off. With the response that we had this year, we're always looking at the information and we are doing, you know, revising our risk assessment. We are contemplating expanding PSPS network in our territory. And we have been asked by cities to actually do that as well. So we have good partnerships and that communication will definitely reach out to those communities after we do our analysis. Design and construction, talked a little bit about that. Inspection and maintenance in high-risk areas, we do, like we even said on the preparing for storms, we do inspection. In these wildfire areas or high-risk areas, we will be more, more distinct in, in looking specifically at issues within that. We may go back and visit some things once or, you know, more than once to make sure that there's assets are performing well. We have operational practices for non-wildest season, wildfire season. So we will change how we operate the grid. Most notably about that is in non-wildest season, we have a line that has a reclosure on it. It will automatically reclose to make sure that the power just keeps going seamlessly to our customers. In wildfire season, we turn those off. We will do a physical inspection before we turn that line back on to make sure we fully understand what caused that line to trip. We do situational awareness and conditional awareness. One of the things we're investing in is weather stations. So our own weather stations we are installing so we can get real-time situational awareness about our own assets, about what is happening with the weather, about our assets, how the wind is blowing near there, the humidity and that sort of thing. We have our plans, we test those, we plan, do, check, you know, that cycle and we're always preparing those. And really important is the community and outreach. And that really is the relationships that we're establishing or that we are maintaining or enhancing, as an example here, to make sure that we have those good relationships and we can have that information flow very quickly. In the wildfire storms this last, this September, we actually had employees embedded in the IMTs that were the wildfire IMTs. Eric was part of that process. So we are getting real-time information that we can help the first responders and vice versa. So one of the examples of that is that we have first responders asking us to do additional power outages and we actually turned off power for eight additional times beyond the PSPS. Next slide, please. So this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier about cyber security and physical security. So we've done a lot of investment in this place, in this space to protect our customers and the information that they, that is private to them and making sure that we are custodians of that. We've done benchmarking with best-in-class in 16 and 19. We've made, finalized all those improvements in 2020. We have expanded our cybersecurity team 500%. And we are enhancing technology and practices throughout our company. One thing that you might find of interest, and we also test our employees, we train them and test them. So we will do phishing exercises to try to catch our employees to click on that malicious email just in case. And then we, we tell them we caught them and we coached them and we will coach them again and raise that up with management if necessary. But we are testing our own employees to make sure we practice what we preach. And then we participate in exercises, not only locally, but with this item that you see that the very last bullet is something called GridX, which is a national exercise and we participate with many utilities and governmental entities across the country to learn from each other. Next slide, please. And then lastly, is earthquake preparedness. And again, I think we can, the shining stars right now that can take our focus very quickly is the pandemic and wildfire. But as Maria stated, it is, it is imperative that we as a company are preparing for all hazards. And one of those hazards is earthquakes. And we are extending that partnership with Estacada and other cities to make sure we're prepared. Again, parting the grid, all that investment, I talked about storm and wildfire is the same type of investment we need to do for earthquake preparedness. Two things I'd like to point out is that we have readiness center, which if we lost operations in downtown, this readiness center is capable of standing earthquake with it, we can sustain our operations and keep things going and managing the grid and talking to our staff. We're also doing a investment right now, or we're constructing an integrated operations center in the Walton area to handle all of our critical teams that will, is designed to withstand an earthquake. So that event did happen, we had the capabilities to respond quickly for our community. It's also being designed, so if FEMA needs to put a trailer there and be there with us, we have hookups for that so we can have that real-time situational awareness and communication to spur that recovery. This image here, which is a difficult message to share, but I'm not sharing it to frighten people. I'm sharing it so we're all prepared. And this comes directly from the Oregon lands. And as you can see there, if we have that cascade, when we have that cascade earthquake, they, they are estimating the electricity will take one to three months to come back, as we know it. Water, one month to a year. Health facilities, 18 months. Again, these are the things that we have to ensure that our communities are aware and they're prepared as well and have their own readiness kits as help is going to be coming in to us to help us be, help speed up that recovery. And these, these zones that you see on here, you know, green, you know, very light, you would hardly feel, feel the earthquake to that red where we're saying significant damage. And as you can only imagine, the tsunami risk on the coastline. Next slide, please. This is my last slide here, but this kind of brings it all together. And this is about, you know, preparing for emergencies. And I won't go through each one of these lines, but I just wanted to just take it from left to right. You know, we have emergency planning and exercises. So we prepare, test and retest and exercise. And if we have an event, we evaluate our steps and improve. The image you're seeing there is actually what we call a customer resource center. We established that when we exercised the PSPS in the Mount Hood Corridor. That was designed so customers in that area could come in, get their phones charged, electronic devices charged, pick up ice and water, which they needed for their own families or themselves, and actually get information about what was going on. That was staffed by our employees that love to give back to the community and hundreds of the members of that community visited that CRC. That was staffed by our employees that love to get back to the community, and hundreds of, of, of the members of that community visited that CRC. System improvements, we talked a lot about the system upgrades, seismic upgrades as well. One thing I haven't mentioned is that we also just did a large upgrade into our radio system to ensuring that that has the capability so we can communicate to our team members and so they can respond very quickly, and we know where, we know where they are, and we can get the information they need to do what they need to do. We have redundant systems. I won't go into that any further. The last point on this slide, which I really want to stress, is really the strategic partnerships. Not only is that with the agencies that we belong to for those mutual aids, but it's really the foundational partnerships, what this community is a part of. It is imperative that we have good relationships with, with the cities that we serve, and you know who to talk to and get answers from immediately. And after this, we would love to make sure that partnership continues and that we can do tabletop exercises to make sure that we have, you know how we respond to things and how, what you're looking for and vice versa. And Eric will be a great resource to make sure that we stay connected and we can capitalize on that type of activity going further. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Nick, who will give a little bit of an insight to what we faced as a result of the recent fires. Nick?
Thank you, Bill. Sadie, next slide, please. Here's the before and after, showing the fire damage from top of the Penn stocks and Oak Grove Powerhouse looking down river. As you know, this fire traveled seventeen miles in five hours with little to no warning. We had to evacuate person, all personnel at Westside Hydro, including our control room operators. This is the first time in history that we've had to do that, as far as we know. And we want to just take a couple minutes to just say thank you to you and your staff for the collaboration and communication during the Riverside Fire. Our team worked closely with Denise Carey and Millie Wagner as part of the EOC, Clackamas County. It was helpful to understand each other's dependencies and facility needs, so that, that your water system needed power to pull water out of that river and to serve the firefighters. It was also me to share our gratitude for those volunteer fire brigade members, community members that worked behind the fire line. They studied Faraday High Bridge. This is the bridge that goes over to the Faraday, Faraday Lake. Their efforts saved that and saved further damage from our infrastructure. So we truly want to say thank you to those that were involved with that. As of today, everything has been reestablished, with the exception of Oak Grove Powerhouse, Oak Grove Flow Control Components. That's where the fire got really hot. So we're looking at mid-year twenty twenty-one before Oak Grove Powerhouse is back online. Next slide, please. So switching gears here a little bit, now for some exciting news. We, the communities in the Clackamas River Basin have just observed our highest fish runs since nineteen fifty-eight. So that's when the dam, or Ford Dam was constructed. Four thousand native shunup salmon, ten thousand koho salmon. These are returning adult fish. And this is three times the normal numbers for returns. This is compared to fifty percent of normal, which is what we're seeing on the Upper Lament Basin. So this is all while we have kind of a below-average ocean condition. So very positive story here. This investment, PGE invested to improve the fish passage facilities, and community members and nonprofits helped with PG's help as well to partner together to do habitat restoration. So between the fish passage facilities and the habitat restoration, those are really the factors for success. But fish are getting past the fields, facilities faster without delay. Fish are safer, faster, traveling higher up into the watershed and spawning, and better spawning habitat, past the fight where the fire was affected. So this is really positive news. It's fun to see this response. When there's a good ocean air, it'll be interesting to see what the numbers are then. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your partnership over the years. It's really helpful when we, there's crisis as a manager that we know each other and can work across great and help each other. So with that, I want to turn it back over to Maria for closing comments.
Thank you, Nick. And let me just echo Nick's comments with regards to the importance of partnership. It really is what makes each of us as first responders and critical infrastructure providers for community members and for, you know, our really entire society, as we look to powering Oregon's potential. It really is being able to work closely with you that makes it all possible. This clearly has been a devastating period of time between COVID and the wildfires. But as Nick pointed out, we have been working with you through good times and challenging times for many, many decades. So thank you. Please note that Eric is your primary conduct, contact, excuse me, but all of us at Portland General are here to work closely with you. And Mary Drinkhard, thank you so much for having us visiting with your entire council. We very much appreciate your time this evening, and we'll take any questions that you have. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you've heard Maria. She put on a great show there. That was wonderful.
I have good health.
Yeah. And I'm glad my city staff was on it with you, and you guys were talking back and forth. That just shows me that we're doing the right thing. I personally want to thank PG for being a great partner and investing in our future. I appreciate everything that you do. With that said, does council have any questions for Maria and her, her group?
I have a couple.
Okay, Katie, go ahead.
Um, so I believe this question is mostly for Bill. So you spoke about how during the windstorm that we had previous, you know, prior to the Riverside Fire, that the Mount Hood Corridor was shut off of power. That was based on an assessment that was done prior, and I understand why the two twenty-four Wilderness Corridor was not shut off. It's because they were not part of that PSP that you were describing. Do you think that after the evaluations are done, that you're talking about happening in the near future, do you think that the two twenty-four corridor is going to be included in that?
I think it's a high possibility, yeah. And especially, I mean, we learned so much from the wildfires and everything. So I think that's absolutely on that table. We've got to look at, and I got to talk to my team who's doing the risk assessment. But I'm challenging them on that conversation. Exact same thing you raised up. I'm challenging them on, so.
Okay. I think one, one of the things that's interesting, in addition to the specific PSPS events we took, we shut off power in eight other areas across our service area, which is why we know that there was no contribution of electrical equipment to any of those fires by, by Portland General.
I even, yeah. I, I was gonna say, I appreciate that comment because that was actually leads me into my next question, whether it has been confirmed that power lines were in fact not the, the cause of the Riverside Fire, because right now we don't actually know anything other than we've been told it was human-caused, and we don't know anything beyond that. And we've been told that one of those possibilities of human cause could be potentially power lines. So has it been confirmed that power lines were not the cause of the Riverside Fire?
So let me say this, what we know to date with all of our investigations and with others, but there's still pending information out there, as you know, we don't know of any situation where our equipment caused any of the fires, and most of our equipment was off. So in addition to proactively shutting off power in the Mount Hood area, we worked with first responders and shut off power in eight other areas across our area in the state.
Okay, I appreciate that. The, the Mount Hood Corridor shut off was a pretty heavily advertised, I would say, the day or so before the shut-off occurred, so.
It was, and I think, I think that that, with the others, that we didn't give people quite as much notice, but we did shut off a lot of other power across the state. In fact, it was two hundred and fifty thousand customers had to have their power restored through that week of the high winds and wildfires. This is about a quarter of the people we serve, actually even a little bit more than a quarter of the people we serve.
Okay, um, so I, I just have one request and then one more line of questions, and I don't really know who this next line of questions is going to go to, but my one request is, someone had mentioned a, a future project involving putting the, the power lines underground on Broadway. I think that's awesome. I would love to see that happen, and I know that that's really important to the resiliency of our city. That being said, one request that I have is that when you do go to put the lines underground, I would love to see some sort of collaboration or collaboration with the city or even private internet providers to try to open up those lines that you might be already putting underground and open up some right-of-way to other internet providers in our area. Right now, we have one internet provider in our city, and it's eighty dollars a month for me to have twenty-five megabytes of internet speed, and I would really like to see something better come to our city, especially when we have so many kids going to school online and every other necessity that we rely on our internet for. Um, that being said, I would like to talk to somebody about the closure of, of Timber Park really quick, because I know that that's actually affecting some of the outdoor recreation that we have available in our area, and we've spent tonight already talking about how hard twenty twenty has been for some people already. And, um, I realize that Timber Park has a lot to offer a lot of people in our area, and I would like to know if there is some sort of an effort to open that park quickly. And if there's not an effort to open it quickly, is there might, is there maybe something that we can work out between the city and PGE that at least allows for some of the recreation that occurs within Timber Park to open up harshly? Just, I, I hate to see so many things being taken away from Estacadians, especially right now, and I know disc golf and kayaking and hiking and the playgrounds and just access to the river in general is really important to people, and I would like to know kind of what the plan is on that one.
Sure. So we have Tony Dental, who runs that area for Portland General, is actually, I understand, is on, and maybe Sadie can bring him on to answer the, your question with regards to Timber Park. While he does that, first of all, I want to tell you what a great suggestion with regards to internet access. And one of the things that we've really tried to do is partner very closely on engineering design, and in some instances, we even have PGE engineers embedded in some of the cities. Some of the larger ones, Hillsborough would be the best example probably, where one of our engineers is right there with the city planner. So not only are we making sure that when we dig up things for underground power, you're getting water, you're getting cable and internet, you're getting all these services at much cheaper because we're all just digging once, and that makes such a difference for everyone. So thank you for bringing that up. And I don't know if it's possible to bring Tony on to answer the question, and if not, maybe Nick or someone could answer it.
Yeah, I'm here. Could you guys hear me okay?
Oh, yeah. There you are, Tony. Thank you.
Okay. So, hi. So I manage the parks for PGE and Timber Parking included. And, yeah, we're anxious to get the park open as well to provide all those opportunities for the, for the public and the citizens there that, that use it primarily. Right now, we're closed, really because it's a staging area for all of the veg management crews that are working in the area that have to get lines clear, tree work done around there. So that's, that's wanting to continue at least into the first part of the year. And then at that point, we're just going to continue to monitor the governor's recommendations on outdoor recreation and what, whether acceptable activities and sizes of groups and, and that kind of thing. And then we'll start to open things back up as, as soon as, as soon as it's safe.
Out of curiosity, Penny, Tony, uh, so I'm, I noticed that there were some people in the beginning of the, of the closure of Timber Park that were parking in the, what do we call it? What do we call that rest area?
Oh, the city portal, yeah.
Yes, the city portal. I noticed that there were some people parking at the city portal and walking in and maybe trying to disc golf. What are the chances that we could allow people to do something like that? Just something as small as disc golf could make the year for somebody in twenty twenty right now?
The, you know, we, we, we don't have security guards on staff, so we know a lot of that stuff, you know, can happen right now. People can walk in without a fence around there. I, I think the, the issue we've got to worry about now is just the security for all of those crews in there. They've got a lot of equipment. I'm actually trying to figure out maybe some other, better places that, another place for that crew to reside and work from so that we can open that up. But it's kind of tough to have a, a partial opening there. There's a lot of people in and out of the park. We get them out in time. There's some security issues that we have to get past.
I would, I appreciate that. I would really love to see our city staff and you working very closely to try to open up Timber Park as soon as possible, and I realize that the, the reason it's closed is a good reason. But I would like to, to work collaboratively to, to move the crews, that they're going to be there for an extended period of time, so that we can reopen really our largest attraction. Timber Park means a lot to people, especially right now, and especially with gyms being closed and outdoor recreation being allowed. I really hate to see one of the largest outdoor recreation areas that we have in our city being closed for such an extended period of time. I understand partial closures, but if it is going to be anything longer than temporary, I'm asking city staff to work with you guys a lot more closely to see that that be reopened as quickly as possible. So thank you so much, PGE, for your time tonight and your presentation and everything that you did for us during the wildfires. I really do greatly appreciate everything you do for our community, and thank you to the linemen who work twenty-four hours a day to keep our grid resilient during rough storms and, and during emergencies. Thank you again to all of you.
Thank you. You know, that was a tough period of time for everyone, and I think one of the things that I'm really heartened when I think of our coworkers is that twenty percent of the people who were serving customers during that period of time were either evacuated themselves or their, their cars were packed, thinking that they would need to evacuate on a moment's notice. So this is a very stressful, terrible time for everyone. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Tony, we've worked a lot of years at those parks. I appreciate everything you do. I'm just glad we still have a park to go to. So thank you. All right. Any other questions for the group? Jerry?
Um, so my question is, you know, it's a project we've been working on with our Arts Commission, and I'm not sure who, if anybody in this, on this panel can answer this, but one project we've been working on with the Arts Commission is we're trying to put wraps on all the power boxes, just a, a beautification process for our downtown area. And I know that there's been a struggle. They've hit some road, roadblocks dealing with PGE, but I'm just trying to, you know, maybe if, if any of you guys can clarify, or if you even know, if you don't know, maybe you can find out and email me back. But, yeah, I mean, it's just part, like I said, part of the beautification process of our downtown area. We want to put some wraps on the power boxes, just, you know, just make it a little bit more, you know, pleasing to the eye. So again, not sure if any, any of you can answer the question, but.
You know, Jerry, thank you very much. And one of the things that we were talking about, as Randy was pointing out, the different murals and things, is, is really, you know, how wonderful of a job you all have done in Estacada, and what a terrific community is. Why doesn't Eric follow up with you on that? We've had some requests from some other communities around wraps on power boxes as well. So thank you for that suggestion.
No problem. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and.
I just wanted to say thanks. Thanks for taking the time this evening to show us everything going on behind the scenes and the steps you guys are taking for few, in the future as well, too, to, to continue to provide the the service that you do. It's, it's absolutely necessary to our area, especially as we're relying on it so much with everything being so virtual now, too. So thanks for the presentation tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I think that's everyone, and we appreciate you, and please come back real soon and fill us in, and I hope to get with all of you in person here before too long.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think moving right along, we are at the proclamation and recognition of the Centennial of the American Legion Post Seventy-Four. And let's see if Terry, you'd like to speak on this before I read the proclamation? Would that be good?
I sure would, and thank you, Your Honor, for allowing me the opportunity to speak and to be before the city council again.
We appreciate you.
I say again, because I was on the city council and president of the city council back in the early eighties. As a matter of fact, that's when Mayor Rowley was mayor and he was recalled. I guess, for a while, I was mayor pro temp when they elected a new mayor. And I guess in today's political climate, we wouldn't say he was recalled. We'd just say, you're fired.
Yeah.
So anyway, and I can tell. So anyway, and I can tell that's a good presentation by PGE. Um, I can tell them why there was a power outage. Uh, not recently, but thirty-some-odd years ago, I was incident commander. I spent forty years in the Forest Service in in wildfire. And uh, I was incident commander on a fire up in Ripple Brook Ranger State District. And um, it was along those major power lines up there. Called in a retardant strike. Um, it was close to the lines, but not on the lines. But unfortunately, a big gust of wind came along right after he dropped, and it blew it right in the power lines. And so we had Fourth of July sparks uh in August. So it was uh by the show.
You got a little history here.
Oh, yes. Anyway, a little history on the American Legion. After nineteen seventeen World War One, also called the Great War, a group of soldiers concerned about the treatment of our wounded and broken veterans returning from war gathered in Paris, France in nineteen eighteen and drafted the Constitution and preamble of the American Legion focusing on the four pillars. Americanism, children and youth, national security, and Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation. The American Legion was chartered by Congress September sixteenth nineteen nineteen as a patriotic veterans organization focusing on service to veterans, service members, and communities. The original preamble in nineteen nineteen read in part, "For God and country, we associate ourselves together for the following purposes: to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, to maintain law and order, to foster and perpetuate a one-hundred percent Americanism, and preserve the memories and incidents or associations in the Great War." The preamble was changed twice since it was written in nineteen nineteen. Nineteen forty-two, after the start of World War Two, the word Great War was changed to the wars. And then in two thousand nineteen, the word wars was changed to all wars, which encompasses everything from nineteen ninety-one to present. American Legion Carl Douglas Post was one of the first one hundred American Legion posts chartered in Oregon on December eighteenth nineteen twenty. The post was named after a young soldier from Eagle Creek named Carl Douglas, who was killed in a freak accident while changing of the guard at Fort Stevens, Washington, on January sixteenth nineteen nineteen. Post seventy-four currently has a membership of over one hundred and fifty veterans ranging from World War Two through the current conflicts and includes all branches of service. Some of the accomplishments of our post are annual recognition of local law enforcement firefighter and teachers of the year. As a matter of fact, one of our local teachers was named American Legion Department, Oregon Teacher of the Year. One of our local firefighters named Damon Faust was nominated and selected as the National Firefighter of the Year and received an all-expense-paid trip back to Minneapolis, Minnesota to receive his national award by our National Commander at the National American Legion Centennial Celebration in two thousand nineteen. That's pretty good for a small little town like Estacada to have a national firefighter. Through our local biannual Memorial Day and Veterans Day breakfast fundraisers, we have given back thousands of dollars in support of medical needs for domestic violence victims, children's medical bills, and IV fluid warming unit for the VA Hospital Emergency Room, just to name a few. Our children and youth programs such as Boys State, National Oratorical Competition, Youth Baseball, et cetera, have provided scholarship opportunities for as much as five thousand dollars at the state level and twenty-five thousand dollars at the national level. And I'm proud to say we had many local high school students win thousands of scholarship money over the years. We look forward to the next one hundred years of in support of our community, state, and nation. Tonight, I present to you, Your Honor, a resolution for your signature recognizing the centennial celebration of the American Legion Carl Douglas Post seventy-four. I also present to you a silver dollar cast in ninety-nine point nine-seven percent silver, recognizing the centennial celebration of the American Legion that was chartered in nineteen nineteen. And to all City Council members, a bumper sticker that says, "God bless our bets", which I hope you will proudly display, a rendering of the Centennial Celebration Medallion to be placed in the promenade at City Hall, and finally, a writing pen. Now, at this time, I ask the City Council to recognize Post Seventy-four First Vice Commander Jim Moriarty who gave a brief history of the significance of the pen.
He's coming in now. Sorry, I didn't realize.
And just for those of you, this is the silver coin. I think you can kind of see it in there that was presented. I think it's beautiful. I am very proud of this. I'm very proud of all of you.
Sean, can you angle it toward the camera a little bit more?
Sure. Is that better?
A little bit.
It's really hard when you're this far away, I know.
I can't wait to see the person.
It's very beautiful, very beautiful. Thank you.
Looks good. Hello, uh, Mayor, City Council members. Hello, Denise and Sadie. Uh, I just want to say that uh this is a fantastic pen.
It is a great pen.
It's gonna be the last pen you're ever gonna need to purchase.
That's right.
Part very easily. Just like that. Take it out. Refill it. And just a brief history about the company, Junior's Bullet Pens. I met the owner, Jeff, approximately four years ago, uh, while I was still working. And uh, before I retired in twenty eighteen through a mutual friend in college, a retired lieutenant colonel in the US Special Forces. We ordered these bullet pens at work for special events, union events, and retirements. Uh, getting to know Jeff over the years, uh, he told me that he and his son Junior uh had an idea about making bullets or bullet uh pens from bullets, seven-six-two rounds. And he discussed this with his father before he was deployed to Afghanistan in two thousand five. Unfortunately, he never got to make the bullets with his father. On August, between the dates of August seventh and August ninth, two thousand five, uh, Chris died and paid the ultimate sacrifice in a fifty-four hour battle where he saved the lives of everyone on his Special Forces team, including sixteen members of the Afghan National Army. He was awarded the Silver Star for bravery and heroism, and his father, uh, to this day, uh, I believe it's been the last eleven years, has made these pens in all armed forces uh shape sizes uh for my federal agency I used to work for. And the reason why Carl Douglas Post era as legionnaires support this fine organization or this company, that thirty percent of the sale of each of these bullet pens goes to organizations supporting Special Forces communities such as Special Forces, I'm sorry, Special Operations Warrior Foundation, the Green Beret Foundation, and Task Force Dagger Foundation that takes care of the brothers and the Special Forces family. I just want to say thank you again, Mayor, City Council members, Denise, Sadie, Merry Christmas to you all. Uh, it's been quite a year. And uh, Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you again, Terry.
Merry Christmas to you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'd I'd like to offer my thanks to Denise and Melanie for their support and uh guidance in this. So, thank you very much. And uh, also the Paul Strobel's family for he has military um family members in the service too. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Cherry. And now I'm going to read this proclamation, which I am very proud of, and I hope you all join me in this. Okay, in recognition of the centennial of American Legion Post Seventy-four Estacada, Oregon by official proclamation, whereas the American Legion was founded in March nineteen nineteen in Paris, France by US World War One military personnel and chartered by Congress on September sixteenth nineteen nineteen. The four pillars of the American Legion are Veterans Affairs, Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas the American Legion Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four Estacada, Oregon was chartered on December eighteenth nineteen twenty. And whereas Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four has provided service to our veterans, children, and youth, city, state, and nation for the past one hundred. And whereas Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four has supported the youth and community through sponsorship at Boys State, Boys Nation, Boy Scouts, Law Enforcement, Career Academy, and Youth Baseball and scholarships through national uh oracle uh contests resulting in thousands of scholarship dollars to our youth. And whereas Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four has given back to the community through financial support to victims of domestic violence, uh, medical fund contributions, volunteer support to our food pantries. And whereas Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four annually recognizes our local heroes through recognition of our local Teacher of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and Law Enforcement Person of the Year programs. And whereas the American Legion Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four Estacada, Oregon is celebrating our hundredth anniversary and post accomplishments with a renewal of the organization to resolve served community, state, and nation for second century. Therefore, in recognition of the hundredth anniversary of Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four, I, Mayor Drinkwine, proclaim the week of December thirteenth through the nineteenth as American Legion Carl Douglas Post Seventy-four Centennial Week, attested this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty. And we thank all of you. That was beautiful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please know that I will use this pen all the time.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Sadie, for your help.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now we are moving along to department and committee reports. So let's see here. We have Clackamas County Sheriff's Office report. You've all had a chance to look at that. So we'll move on from that. Uh, committee and commission and liaison reports. None of you have any right now, and you haven't had any for a while. Unless you want to say something. Is there somebody that wants to speak at that point about something?
Um, I will say that the fire depart- or the uh fire board is currently working on uh forming some smaller committees to help address the questions of what to do next after the uh vote uh said that they did not want to merge with Clackamas Fire. So if you have any interest in serving on these smaller committees to reach out to the fire board for more information on how to serve and how to participate and how to potentially volunteer in the future, that is what I will say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that. Anybody else have anything they wish to bring up at that time? No? Okay. Moving along, we are at the city managers' report.
Yeah, I just have a couple things. Um, we uh have come up with the dates for the DEI training, so I wanted to let everyone get these on their calendar. And they are all Mondays because the other nights seem to conflict. So we have February first, March first, and March twenty-ninth, and I'll send out an email with those uh those dates. Um, it seemed like Mondays was really the only date since you're used to having Monday meetings that we were able to. We couldn't do them a lot closer because there is um holidays in there on Mondays. So, and they just got back to us today, and these dates are good with them, so we'll be getting a uh um agreement with them for these dates. So I want everyone, since they're far out there, to get them on your calendar, and they'll be from six to eight on those dates.
Okay, great.
And then we had our tree lighting. It was uh very, the trees beautiful, City Hall looks great. I want to give Ryan uh and and Marcos, they really worked hard on City Hall. And I think they did a great job on decorating the tree. And I just want to let everyone know this is our last meeting of the year, so I want to just wish everyone happy holidays. And I hope uh things are gonna be looking up for the new year twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yes.
Forward to 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 getting on with with normalcy, hopefully.
Yes.
Whatever that is.
Okay. Well, we're at the public hearing part of this meeting tonight. I have two of them on here. The first is in ordinance twenty twenty zero zero four, an ordinance amending Title sixteen Development Chap- Chapter sixteen point three-eight, outdoor commercial of Estacada Municipal Code to allow the Planning Commission to extend the maximum number of days that campground unit may be rented to a same person. Now, anybody got any questions on this before I do this?
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So we're not actually talking about whether or not to extend uh the stay of a campground. We're talking about whether or not that decision should lie with the Planning Commission or the City Council, correct?
With the Planning Commission.
So, yes. So, but right now, if someone were to ask for conditional use or some exception to a rule, they'd come to the council, right? Currently, if that was the case?
Oh, it goes to the Planning Commission.
A conditional use application goes to the Planning Commission. Yeah.
Do they currently have the final say for for conditional uses?
Yes.
Okay, is that written in our in our charter or in our code, I mean?
Yes, and that's that's uh common throughout most jurisdictions, at least in Oregon.
Yeah, the City Council is the appeal board. If that, if the if the application or decision is appealed, then it goes through the City Council.
So, so right now, as it stands, if the if the uh Planning Commission were to say yes to any other conditional use permit, then the answer is yes. And it doesn't ever come to before the council. But if the Planning Commission's answer is no, then that could still be presented to the council as an appeal, and then the City Council has an opinion at that point. Is that what you're saying?
Any decision by the Planning Commission can be appealed, um, and not necessarily by the applicant. So if the applicant requests something and the Planning Commission grants it, anyone can appeal that within the same period, and it would still go to the City Council. Um, so if they approve something and um someone wanted to appeal because they thought that it should be denied or or that it should have um different conditions applied to the approval, that could go to the City Council then.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can go and share my screen for the staff report if that's.
I think that the mayor has some more things to say.
Yeah, let me get get started here. Okay, so I'm gonna read the public hearing notes right now. This is a little part I have to read. Well, so we'll go out of the City Council meeting and into the public hearing. So I will now close the City Council meeting and open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero four. I've read you all the part of that already, so you already know what that says. Um, and do any of the members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. The council will now hear the staff report and the proposal. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, sorry, I jumped the gun there.
That's all right.
I'm gonna share my screen. And you should all now be able to see my PowerPoint. Okay, um, ordinance twenty twenty dash oh oh four. This is uh regarding the OC outdoor commercial um rules around campground stay limits. Um, and this presentation is the Planning Commission's report and recommendation. The City Council's decision tonight is final unless appealed to Lupa. Here we go. Okay, so um a little bit of background on uh this request or proposal. Um, ordinance twenty nineteen double oh five, which uh you all approved in March of this year, um, created those six new zones, including the outdoor commercial zone or the OC zone. Um, that zone allows outright pedestrian and multi-use trails um and then allows campgrounds and commercial storage of RVs as conditional uses. Um, so that that's what would be approved by the Planning Commission if they approved it. Those campgrounds currently, if they are approved by the Planning Commission, can be rented to the same person for no more than twenty-one consecutive days and no more than thirty days total in a calendar year. That's how it's currently written. This specific uh ordinance amendment uh was requested by uh you all following a property owner's testimony at the September twenty-eighth uh City Council meeting. Um, that property owner uh was saying how the limit on campground stays was preventing the development of their property with um this specific type of. with um this specific type of RV campground. Um, and in his testimony, Mr. Ratamaker, who brought this up, explained that the kind of business model that they're uh hoping to replicate caters to longer-term uh visitors, like retirees um or I think what they called snowbirds, who would, you know, travel to Estacada for a whole season um and utilize the RV campground kind of as a home base uh from from where they would either hang out in Estacada or, you know, go to the mountain for the weekend or um whatnot. Um, he noted how there's similar operations in the region that allow guests to stay for as long as six or nine months, whereas our code, as I mentioned, currently only allows um three consecutive weeks. Um, and then he also cited how the uh the recent fire event uh displacing a lot of local residents. And um I think uh the council discussed a little bit about how the general lack of housing options in the city um made the proposal sound interesting and then requested that the Planning Commission uh consider it. And so um that is uh why they reviewed this at their last meeting. And then um as for why the limit was uh was established in the first place, um staff included this limit uh essentially with the intention of preventing indefinite or unreasonably extended stays, especially um for like tent camping. Um, however, since the Planning Commission would have to evaluate any proposed campground because it's a conditional use, um they found that this amendment would not, wouldn't necessarily make it any more likely that an unreasonably um or long or indefinite stay in a campground um would happen because they would still have control over the limit for those stays. So, there is the context behind uh the initiation of this proposal. Here is a screen grab of the comprehensive plan map showing where the outdoor commercial zone currently is in this solid green color. Um, and then not part of this proposal, but just mentioning it because you've uh hopefully seen it in the packets. Um, later this evening, uh in the next presentation, we'll talk about how um this property here is also being proposed to be rezoned to outdoor commercial. Um, so that's where it is in uh within the urban growth boundary. So, here is the proposal. The amendment would allow the Planning Commission to um upon their conditional use review of a campground that's proposed in the OC zone, uh they would now be allowed to extend that allowed rental period from twenty-one consecutive days or thirty days total um to whatever time they determined was reasonable and allowable based on their assessment of the applicant's request. Um, and if their decision for on a campground doesn't explicitly address the stay limit, then it would automatically just default still to this twenty-one day or thirty-day maximum uh limit. That would still apply. Um, so the amendment would only change the stay limit for proposals that are explicitly granted some extension of that maximum stay period um by the Planning Commission. And then on the screen, you're seeing um what the text amendment would look like here. Um, so it just adds in red um da 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 for no more than twenty-one consecutive days and no more than thirty days in a calendar year, unless otherwise allowed by the Planning Commission. So it would need to be expressly stated in those conditions of approval. Code amendments are required to be consistent with whichever statewide and comprehensive plan goals apply to them. Um, so called out here um are the the two uh goal categories which with uh this uh this proposal is found to be consistent um and at least and not detrimental. Um, and so that brings us to the Planning Commission's recommendation um for approval of the amendments proposed in the draft text of the amendment. Um, and if the if the City Council does approve the proposal tonight, no specific conditions were recommended other than um just administratively making it happen. Um, so I think that's it from me, uh unless we all have any questions.
Are there any questions for Taylor before we move on?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, so in our own municipal code, not talking about the rest of the state of Oregon, how many of our current ordinances include the words unless allowed by the Planning Commission? I'm curious because I actually study the municipal code, and this is the the first time that I've seen those words consecutively without including and City Council.
Um, I don't know how many. I know that it's in there, um but I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head where. Um, and if it were, if it were, if it needed to go to City Council, um then the type of I guess it's just that a a conditional use application doesn't usually go to City Council. So um the thought was whichever decision-making body is supposed to review this application, um they would be the ones to decide whether or not to extend that.
So I'm just somebody who believes in checks and balances personally. Um, and I and I I I know that rarely has the City Council uh not approved a recommendation by a standing committee in our city. However, I thought that check and balance system existing is at least uh for me peace of mind. Even if the the Planning Commission sees something like this and says, hey, you know what we should do? We should allow this use even though they plan to camp there longer than twenty-one days. And if the Planning Commission was to make that recommendation, and then that recommendation still gets sent to council for final approval, that would make me feel more comfortable because that checks and balances would still exist. Um, I have not seen anything in our municipal code that says that the Planning Commission, uh a group of people who are not uh elected officials within our city have full power to make decisions that are going to end up affecting the city, and that just makes me a little bit uncomfortable. And like I said, looking through the rest of the municipal code and looking at the conditional uses uh sections in all of the the planning commit- or in all the development code, uh which is where sixteen point thirty-two point zero four zero would end up or whatever this number is, uh I don't see those words unless allowed by the Planning Commission existing anywhere else in our city code or in our municipal code. And I would just be worried about setting that precedent by using those words consecutively as they're written out and read uh by the proposal that we're looking at right now. Um, I would be worried about putting that into our municipal code for the first time for this one reason. So I would feel more comfortable uh tabling this conversation and then uh going back and 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 having our municipal code reviewed to see how common it really is for our Planning Commission to be given this amount of power.
I I had a different thought on this. Um, I actually liked the direction it was going as presented. Uh, because to me, it simplifies a process already that we don't have to take. I I think that was the intent of this as well, too, wasn't it? To to basically simplify the process so that we didn't have to uh take extra steps to get uh any conditional uh stays approved, something along those lines. Um, and and I like it as it's written now. I think it it again, it simplifies it, removes some of the red tape. Um, to me, the checks and balances, maybe it's not there and that that it'll take two steps to approve uh the conditional pru- uh approval, but uh they still have the ability to appeal one way or the other. And that, to me, that's where the checks and balances would kick in, is that if there's a yes and and somebody doesn't like that, they can take it to the City Council. That's what we're here for. And if there's a no, and they think it should have been approved, then that's what we're here for, to hear that appeal.
Okay. All right. Is that it on on comments?
I I just wanted to say that I was thinking basically the same thing Paul did. Um, I agree with the direction that it's going and um, you know, I I agree with it, so.
Okay, all right. And I'd have to agree with Katie. I think it is not checks and balances. This is, this is saying that if they don't agree with it, they can come to us. I get that. But at the same time, I feel like it is taking away from the very thing that people voted for, a council. You're a voted body. You're voted to make those decisions, not have them made through somebody else in a commission which answers to you, the council. So it does take away a little bit of that slowly. Now, if you keep doing that with groups and we decide this is working for this, and let's do this with this group, and let's do it kind of deletes the purpose. We're all here. So I have to agree slightly with Katie on this one. That does sound a little bit like switching it up.
Oh, my God.
So uh just a little, not an argument against, but just a little uh thing. So these commissions, they all of the, everyone on serving on these commissions were appointed by this council. Um, if my my opinion is if we start um, you know, questioning every single decision that they make, we're going to lose volunteers. We're going to lose people joining these commissions. And um it's going to make them feel that we don't have the faith um that we, you know, that we don't have the faith that we put in them when we appointed them to these commissions. Um, you know, just a a little argument, but um, you know, again, I I can see your point. I definitely see your point, so.
Jerry, I I agree with what you're saying. And I and I'm not wanting to debate this issue at all with anybody. Um, what I will say, though, is that when we appoint these people to the commissions, we're appointing them to commissions that are responsible for making recommendations to the City Council. That's literally what all of them are supposed to do. They're they're supposed to make recommendations to the City Council. We would like to see this done in Parks and Recreation. We would like to see this done in city planning. We would like to see this done in arts. That's what their their job is, is to make recommendations to the City Council. It is the City Council's job to be the quasi-judicial and the administrative or the legislative body for the city. So when it comes to actually making decisions that are going to affect the the livability or or any of the major decisions, I think that the sole responsibility should fall on the council. However, I do believe that every single person who participates on the commissions and the committees within our city has a very real responsibility of making those recommendations that wouldn't otherwise be made. So really, they should be making those recommendations. And if the city, if the the Planning Commission came to the City Council and said, we recommend that for this particular applicant, they be allowed to have a camping uh or a a conditional use for the camping term limit or the the camping limit for these residents, um then absolutely make the recommendation to City Council. Um, they would, they, I I that's what I feel like is the difference here. They're not making a recommendation. They're making a hard and fast rule. That's the difference.
As it is right now, the almost every zone has conditional uses in them. Um, and so if somebody wants to establish that use, they need to apply for a conditional use permit, and the Planning Commission makes the final decision on that permit and decides um, you know, what conditions get applied to it. So I wonder if the question here could be um what is the maximum campground stay um limit that the City Council um would feel comfortable allowing? Um, is that something that could get written into?
Taylor, I I don't mean to to be combative or anything, but I just pulled up, for example, sixteen point three four point zero four zero conditional uses. This is as it relates to um the Riverfront Commercial Conditional Uses. It lists A through F. If you want conditional use to be this and that and the other thing. I do not see the words unless allowed by Planning Commission in this conditional uses as it is written on our municipal code. I do not see that written. And honestly, I cannot find, and I would love it if someone from the city could please find the municipal ordinance in our municipal code that says the words unless allowed by the Planning Commission. The way that I see everything written right now, I don't think it is appropriate for the final decision on conditional use permits to lie within the Planning Commission. Because it's not written in our municipal code. I'm looking at it right now.
Um, Katie?
Yeah.
In section sixteen point eight eight point oh two oh, Authorization to Grant or Deny Conditional Use Permit. That's where it talks about that it's the Planning Commission.
Um, point eight eight?
Sixteen point eight eight point oh two oh. Authorization to Grant or Deny Conditional Use Permit. Not that goes through the what you do, and then it says um any permit granted by the Planning Commission. Let me see, that's where it can be. Anyway, that's where it shows that the Planning Commission has the authority to approve those.
And I also think that that, I mean, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is that the the crux of the concern is that the City Council ultimately is who was trusted by voters to decide whether to, whether and how to amend the development code and and, you know, make other changes in the city. And so maybe the question is um what is the maximum stay that the City Council would find reasonable for a campground visitor to be allowed to stay? Sorry if you can hear my dog crying in the background.
Give me putting some parameters around that then.
Right, so, you know, allowing up to whatever limit the City Council deems reasonable instead of leaving it open-ended for the Planning Commission to make a final decision on. Could be, or adding something in there that says, um, instead of saying unless explicitly or unless otherwise authorized by the Planning Commission, simply wording it unless otherwise op- uh authorized by the City Council, which would lengthen that uh approval process because you would need two public public hearings instead of the normal one public hearing. But um that could absolutely be changed.
Well, we have to have two public hearings for subdivisions, don't we?
For subdivisions, yes, but for conditional uses, it only goes to the Planning Commission.
I think both matters affect residents' lives and livability in our city. And I think that because of that reason, that um if it's not written in our city charter, that the City Council should have the the final say. Or I guess we're, we have the final say as it comes to approvals, or I'm sorry, appeals. But uh personally, I'd like to see this conversation tabled until next year when we have a new council. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Uh, so is that a possibility? Can we do that until our first meeting in January? Is that something that's uh possible?
I'm not sure. Does that uh, Taylor, will that make the timeline of this? If you, on applications like this, if you don't have, make a decision in a certain timeline?
A hundred twenty day, um I don't think that applies for a legislative amendment that is city-initiated. It does apply for an applicant-initiated, you know.
Oh, great, because we're the applicant, so we can say, well, waive the hundred and twenty days. Okay, perfect.
So that is a possibility I'm hearing now? Okay.
I'd like to see this conversation tabled to after the first of the year when we have a new council and new members who can give their input to any potential maximums of overnight stays or where ultimately the decision uh should lie within the city.
And then what what do you, what do you see our discussion looking like then next month?
Well, I I'd like to, I'd like to see that conversation start in our workshop that we have at the beginning of the year before we have it in a formal council meeting, too. And then I I have no idea what that conversation's going to be looking like because I'm not going to be the only person to part of that conversation.
I mean, are we gonna discuss kind of what Taylor had tossed out there, uh putting in some caps? Or are we gonna discuss? Or are we going to discuss, or just keep it open ended from, for a discussion standpoint?
I, I think what Taylor brought up is how we word this and how we put this together might actually work out, but I'd like to have that conversation with everybody in the, in the room to decide this. And I think, you know, she was on the right track. I, I have no problem with that. But before we do this proclamation, I'd want to do it the right way. So I, I think that's fine. Is that, is that okay with everybody or is that something that's contentious here?
Well, if, if, I think that if we were to put it to a vote right now, it probably wouldn't pass. So we're either going to have this conversation after the first of the year or we're going to have this conversation right now and it's not going to go much further.
Right, and I think so too. So at this point, seeing as it's going to be split, we may as well just tighten it right now and, and bump it next, next month.
I agree. You'd sound super strobe.
All right, so staff, is that something we can do? Bump this to the next?
Denise, do we need to continue on through the public hearing though and then come out into the council meeting before we make a, somebody needs to make a motion?
Yeah, so I think we need to continue the public hearing because I think that the people, and so this discussion can't be made in your workshop. It has to be made in a public hearing.
Okay.
Already to that point, so, but you have to continue your public hearing so people can respond to whatever the council is saying, so.
Okay, so just go through the rest of this. We'll come out of this and the.
Yeah, you can go through this, but don't close the public hearing.
Oh, because we're going to have to have a second public hearing after the first of the year.
Yeah, we will, we will just, we will, uh.
We'll continue with our current.
Continue.
Okay, okay, so this will be open. I'll just end this and open it after I get through this.
Yep.
All right. Is there any correspondence in this application, Taylor? I needed to ask you that before we move on. Okay. I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing in the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on this issue. Okay. And the applicant, there is no applicant coming forward, right? Is there one there?
We, Sadie is the applicant. Yeah.
The city is up, okay. All right, did you want to speak on that before or just go over that? All right. Just because, are there any questions from, from the applicant or to the applicant here? I think you've all done that. We've already done that. We've been through that, so I'll move on. Does the staff have any additional comments to make? Any? No? Okay. At this time, I will now, I'm not going to close the public hearing. I want to leave the public hearing open. Or how many? I can't hear you, Denise.
You need to ask if there's anyone that wants to comment on it from the public.
Okay. Is there anybody that wishes to comment to the testimony?
If you can use the raise hand function.
Yeah, if you could raise your hand. Is there anybody?
I had one, but they, oh, here, I have Alan Rodemaker. Hang on just a second.
Hey, Alan, how are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good.
My question is, is my brother Gary Sadie, is he plugged in there?
He's, he's here. If, did you want me to bring him into the meeting?
Could you bring him into play? I appreciate it.
And Jackie as well? She's raising her hand too.
Uh, yeah, I think Jackie's running the computer for him.
Okay.
This is daughter.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Gary, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah. I assume you've been paying attention, what's going on?
Yeah, I've been listening to the whole thing.
Okay.
What's your?
They want to continue this. I guess we'll just have to let them continue it and wait for the decision then.
Yeah.
They're not going to vote on it now. And again, this, this is not a campground. This is an RV center, you know. Anyway, so, no, let them discuss it amongst themselves and hopefully they won't continue this too long. They'll get back together and see your, and listen to your decision, but I think that's all we can do at this point. That's it for me.
Alan and Gary, I'd like to say something to you guys really quick if that's okay.
Sure.
I, I do hope that you understand that the way this was presented to the council tonight was not a decision of to whether or not we allow your RV, your RV ground or your conditional use permit. That is not what our conversation was. And that's not what was presented to the council tonight. The conversation, as it was presented to the council in our packet, was to amend our municipal code to allow solely that decision making within a, a, a different body of our government here. So that, that's what the conversation was. I hope you understand that that's how it was presented to us and we were not, we were not making a decision on your RV campground this evening, which I do look forward to, to seeing in fruition at the appropriate time. Just so you know, I am excited to see housing diversity here in our city.
No, I understand totally. Been, been to a few of these.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So now I have this open. I just, I'm done with this right now. We just leave this, this open, this actual public hearing.
Just declare that you're going to continue the planning commission, the public hearing until January eleventh.
Okay, so we will continue this public hearing on January eleventh of 2021. So I set this aside and then we go into the next public hearing. Is that right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay. So I am now entering the second public hearing. A zone change, twenty twenty dash zero one, ZC tax lot thirty four E one seven two four zero one. Okay, I will now open the city council meeting and open the public hearing on this application. Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? Okay, the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal.
Okay, can you all hear me and see my screen?
Yep.
All right, so here we are with the, the first piece of the the multiple applications that the Radamakers are, will need to submit in order to establish that RV campground or facility that they were just mentioning. So twenty twenty dash oh one ZC. This is the planning commission's report and recommendation to you all. And your decision once again is final unless appealed to Luba. So the applicant is proposing a zone change of their property, tax lot twenty four oh one, from its current M one light industrial designation to the OC outdoor commercial zone. This tax lot was included in the, the study area that was proposed for the big redesignation and rezoning in ordinance twenty nineteen oh oh five, which it originally was proposed to be zoned highway commercial. The boundaries of the, the traffic impact study that was done for that big ordinance that the city council approved in March, that the boundaries of that traffic study included this property and assumed that the property would be zoned with, according to highway commercial allowed uses, which is a higher intensity than what the OC zone would allow. The applicant here participated in all three of those public hearings. So the first two public hearings on ordinance twenty nineteen double oh five were the planning commission hearings and then the final one being with city council. At that first hearing, the applicant, Mr. Radamaker, requested that instead of highway commercial, his property be zoned outdoor commercial, which we're talking about today. He was talking about his interest in developing the property with this RV campground facility, kind of a nicer type of facility than what you would think of as your typical campground, which could be allowed on that site if it were zoned outdoor commercial, could be allowed with a conditional use permit. And, you know, he, he talked about the adjacency to the nearby Timber Park. The kilowatt lane here is this multi-use trail that actually, you know, ends right here at the, the subject property's southwestern corner. And so just really good access to some of our local outdoor recreational amenities. Neither the planning commission or staff in that conversation saw any issue with doing that. The traffic impact study supported that. And so we moved forward recommending that it be zoned outdoor commercial at that time. However, then at the second hearing, also with planning commission, the applicant, Mr. Radamaker, shared that he was hesitant to move forward with that change just because his development plans were uncertain. They were dealing with a lot of moving variables that they were dependent on. And so they didn't want to, you know, put themselves in jeopardy necessarily. And so he requested to stay with the originally proposed highway commercial zone, which is what came to the city council at the, the third and final public hearing for ordinance twenty nineteen double oh five. And at that final hearing, he came back again and explained he was still experiencing that uncertainty around the feasibility of the development. And he just didn't have enough information at that time to commit to the RV campground plan. And felt less optimistic also about the highway commercial zone. And at that point, he requested that his property just stay M one light industrial, which is what it's been. He just felt more comfortable with that. At that meeting, you know, planning staff and the city council agreed that that was fine. And so it, it stayed M one light industrial. It was excluded from the zone changes that were involved in that ordinance. And the planning staff who led that, that whole process, Glenn Hamburg with the county, mentioned that if Mr. Radamaker kind of got his plans more solidified within a year or so of that approval, that those supporting analyses and studies, so the traffic impact study, the, the economic opportunities analysis, et cetera, those would still be applicable and would support the zone change if he decided to move forward with it in a soon enough time period. So here we are today, approximately, well, the application was submitted in October, about seven months after the adoption of that ordinance. So here we are today. He followed through and came back to us with what we expected might happen, which was that originally proposed, or I'm sorry, not originally proposed, but was agreed upon as a good idea at that first public hearing to zone this parcel outdoor commercial. So there's a long-winded background about what kind of led up to this request. A little bit about the site itself. It is a little over six acres in size. It's currently undeveloped. It is adjacent to the Estacada Bark and Nursery, which is here to the east. Access is currently taken from River Mill Road, but upon development, Campus Drive will punch down through to River Mill. And so access would be from campus. It is surrounded by incorporated properties to the north, east and south that are zoned for and developed with industrial and commercial uses. And then to its west by unincorporated properties owned, Clackamas County Rural Residential. And then here to the southwest, as I mentioned, is the Timber Park. Service considerations. There is an existing sanitary sewer line along the western boundary of the site and public water is of course available in Campus Drive. Those services would be established with future development and the city engineer confirmed there's enough capacity to support the development of that anticipated RV, you know, hundred space RV campground use. As with the last proposal, a change to the comprehensive plan map, which a zone change in the city of Estacada is also a change to the comprehensive plan map, must satisfy whatever statewide and comprehensive plan goals apply to it. So with these listed here that it's found to be consistent with that are applicable to it, the change for, the change to outdoor commercial would support the city and state's goals for natural resources, preservation, recreational needs for the citizens of the city and economic development as this is a commercial zone and would support, would align with the, those findings of the economic opportunities analysis that found that the city had a surplus of, a great surplus of light industrial land and could easily, easily rezone to other types of, and more diverse types of commercial land. And with that, lastly, zone changes must meet some fault, these following basic requirements in order to be granted. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as mentioned, those applicable goals from the comp plan. There are adequate public services that can serve the proposed and potential uses that would be allowed in that zone. The traffic impact study showed that the transportation system is adequate to serve, more than adequate to serve the anticipated traffic. And it does not, in fact, affect the Oregon Highway Plan, so it's consistent with that. So with that, the planning commission recommended approval to rezone tax lot twenty four oh one from M one light industrial to OC outdoor commercial.
Good. Thank you, Taylor. Okay. All right, everybody's had it down, so listen to that. Is there any correspondence regarding this application?
Um, not, not that wasn't included in your packets.
Okay.
There was a letter from the applicant.
All right. Okay, moving along, I will now read a statement. Okay, the statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity is to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, would the applicant please come to the microphone? Is the applicant there?
Yep, they're coming on right now.
Okay. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Hello. All right, who's going to start us off?
Uh, I will.
Okay.
I agree with the staff report and I would like to proceed ahead with this. And I think it, it'll be a plus. And I think it, it'll be a plus for the city of Estacada. And this is not a campground, it is an RV's center. Thank you.
All right, you bet. Alan, you want to say anything?
No, that's pretty much the story. I think it's a good addition. It fits in lots of ways. I presented a letter to the, that I hope all the council members got in their pack that states my, my view of the matter in two pages and.
All right. Would any of the counselors like to ask a question to the applicant at this time? No? Everybody's confident? Okay. We don't have any speaker request forms, city, or anything like that?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Does, okay, does staff have any additional comments or response to this? That they wish to give right now? Okay, at this time, I will now close the public hearing and I will reopen the city council when we can vote on this.
I move to approve zone change number 2020-01-ZC-taxlot34E172401.
Okay, perfect. Do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. We are now at council business. So committee and commission appointments, I am now at, and there's several of those, so it's going to take me a minute. I'm just going to go group by group here. We'll start off with the Arts Commission application. I have Peter Hammer and Carl Hagan, I think is the name that I've I'm recommending to appoint. On the downtown Estacada Commission applications, I have Rebecca Kaihan or Kaihan. I think that's how you say her name. Jenny Bedoin, Julie Cooper, Kimberly Bruce and Brenda Crosby. On the Parks and Recreation Commission, I am recommending Stephen Shabriel and Brett Doddrum. On the Planning Commission, Gary Mingus, Tom Sager and Richard Hartwig. On the Library Board, Desiree, wait, oh wait, I got one more on the Planning Commission, Tara Perkins. Sorry about that. I missed her. And on the Library Board, Desiree Flick.
Okay, and then if you, can you just be clear on the DEC Committee? We have one that will have a term ending December 31st, 2021.
Okay.
So it would either be Ms. Kayani or Ms. Bruce.
Y'all really did that when.
Okay, well, so I got to pick one of those to be ending?
Yeah, they'll both be, they'll be planted, but one of them will have a shorter term.
Okay, let's go with Rebecca Kayani.
For the term being 22.
There are five people left and there are probably two imposters left.
Somebody got their volume up there?
Jerry, is there something on?
Sorry.
Okay. Got it. So we just need consensus from the council that.
Yeah, and now we will ask for consensus from council. Is council agree with those choices? Are you comfortable with those people? Am I seeing a nod, a yes, a no? Okay. Okay, struggle's good.
So I, my one question is, so Kimberly Bruce applied for multiple commissions. Are we appointing, would we be appointing her to the downtown Estacada Commission only?
Yeah.
Is that what I got from Sean's recommendations only? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so she will be on a commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, consensus.
All right, everybody's good then? Okay, great. All right, city staff, we are all in consensus. It moves along. Okay. Now that we got that out of the way, we are going to talk about the CARES Act funding. And I'm going to let Denise kind of give you an overview of what that entails. Go ahead, Denise, are you there?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting down to it. Hold on just a second. I thought I had, here we are, okay. Got it. So the city was allocated some funds from the CARES Act and Melanie's been keeping track of that and the city has been purchasing things to, hopefully when we open up and so that, the, all the funds have to be spent by December 31st. So we only have about 15 days left to, to spend the money. So we kind of took after what Portland just did with their remaining funds and we liked their idea of, they just did a quick application period for residents to apply for a $500 visa card. I think they gave out 4,000 of them and they only did a three-hour window and had way more than 4,000. But you, we have, we're, we're able to give 120 of them. And we would open up the applications for any resident in the city limits of Estacada, beginning eight o'clock AM on Thursday, ending five o'clock PM on Thursday. And then will, every eligible person will put a, a name in a pot and then we'll draw the first 120 and those people will receive a visa debit card. And we, because we had some HVAC work done and it didn't cost as much as we thought it was going to be. And so we had a little bit of extra funding left and we really don't want to give the money back. And this is a quick way that we can distribute it and have, have, get the application and get it done in the 15 days.
I have a quick question. A, a quick request, actually, and I don't know if it's too late to change this in the proposal or not, but I noticed that you were doling out 500 to 120 people, not households, people, individuals, which I appreciate because I know a lot more than 120 who have been affected by COVID. But why are we putting a, a max number of four per household?
We're just doing what, what Portland did and if you guys want to change it, that's fine. So.
We, we are a lot smaller than Portland and I would like to at least see that number reduced to two, if not, if not one. I, I mean, really, if we had households who were receiving four of these cards that we're only able to give 120 out of, or 122, we could potentially end up with only 30 households that end up with $2,000 apiece. And I would like to see a little bit more, you know, equitability. Um, and, and I'd like to see more than just 30 households get the, a chance at this.
So definitely change that. I, that's why we put the information out. Any suggestions you guys have? We haven't put it out to the public yet, so.
Yeah, I, I see that number reduced from four to at least two, if not one, depending on how the rest of the council feels, but.
That just means they have more chances in the drawing. They'll have two people in the drawing. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get the card, so.
I'll, I'll tell you what then, appreciating that perspective of it. I say that as many people from a household can apply as they want, but I think that when it comes to the final awarding of the, of these visa gift cards, that the final awards should not exceed more than two per household.
Okay.
That's, that, if, if the rest of the council feels that way, I think that would be most appropriate. The second question I had was that you, you spoke about having bought all this PPE and doing a lot of upgrades to City Hall and things like that to really protect everybody from this virus, whether it be from the public or city staff themselves. When are we going to open up City Hall? Because it's been closed for the last nine months. And I, if we are already investing all of the money in the PPE and the sneeze guards and the social distancing signs and stuff, I think it would make more sense then if we were to open up City Hall, since we have all of those things now in place.
Well, as soon as the governor's order, right now, the governor's order is you work from home if you can. We can and it's working, so we aren't going to open as long as that order's in place. But yeah, as soon as those orders change, that they want people to go back to work and not work from home if you can, we'll be opening up. We have started on Mondays and Wednesdays. We have people in the office during those times to make it easy for people that need to pay cash. We aren't open. They still have to make an appointment. But we have, we have regular hours and we did that not only for the public, but even for our public works guys that need to get stuff done. We said, we need to start having people in the office. So we have one person in the office each of the day, so they aren't, there's not two people in there at the same time.
Well, and I, I've actually had people reaching out to me about how the City Hall being closed has also resulted in a, a delay of building permits being issued and that's actually. Well, I would talk to the people who run Thomas Heights Development then, because I, yeah, they, they have been telling people buying homes in the Thomas Heights Phase Two development that, that this process is being delayed by up to two weeks because staff are not at City Hall or other staff members are on vacation. So that's just some of the stuff coming to.
We'll talk to the Thomas Heights people and see what issue they're having because building permits are dropped off at the library because they have the bigger hole to put things in. We pick those up daily. They're processed just like they were. The building department is processing them just as quickly. I know that just last week, we had 19 building permits turned in. So if we are a little slower, it's because the amount of building permits that are getting turned in right now. It's not because of people not working because we're doing the same amount of work. It's just not open to the public. So in fact, we're getting more done.
I appreciate that for sure.
Okay, so we're back to the CARES Act thing. We're all in agreement that two per household will be sufficient? Is that okay with everybody else's consensus? Okay, okay, staff, that's where we're going.
I think many people from a household can apply, but when it comes to the final award that we maxed it at two per household.
Okay.
And we can, we can do that. We can get, be sure that's done.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Denise?
Yes.
Is there a, is there a contingency plan if, if, you know, for whatever reason, you don't get enough applicants putting in?
So we, we imagine we're going to get 300 to 500 applicants. Once the, once it closes, we put everyone's name in a hat and the first 120 that are drawn get the cards.
All right.
Paul, I can almost guarantee you, we're going to break the internet when we accept applications.
I will see how that goes.
And something else that I would like to see the city staff include on the application is that I realize that we're asking the question, how has COVID-19 affected your household? And really, there are so many answers to that. I would like to see something added that, that basically protects the, the, the money that we're doling out by saying that, that the answers that you give are, are basically punishable by perjury if you are lying on this application. I would like to see some language like that added just because, you know, when you open up free money to anybody who can just apply, that's nice and dandy. I know that there are a lot of people who have been affected by COVID. You guys, this isn't just the people who've gotten sick or laid off, but also the businesses that, that didn't have to close, but they're experiencing a lot less traffic because of reduced capacity or less business in general. And so the, really, there are a lot of businesses and people, individuals who are affected by COVID, not just because their business shut down or they got sick, but for a plethora of reasons. And I, I really do think that this is a really good first step for us to reach out to, to those individuals. But Denise, going back to a conversation that we started at the beginning of this evening, I would like to see our city really get creative at the beginning of next year to see what we can do specifically for businesses. These $500 gift cards, they're not going to be enough for the businesses. They're going to be really great for some individuals and they might not even save some individuals. I'm an apartment manager. I've been experiencing the eviction moratorium that started back in March. We have several residents at the community that I manage who are not caught up on their rent and may owe a month or two or nine months worth of rent. And those kinds of people really do need a lot of assistance. So I'm really glad that we're reaching out to the individuals. But I would really like to see us as a city get creative come the beginning of the year to see what we can do, where we can pull money from. I know we've got money in reserves. We talk about having it saved up for a rainy day all the time. We're at a rainy day. It, it rained pretty hard this year between the COVID, the wildfire, COVID again. And, and I would really like to see us having a more in-depth conversation about what we can do for businesses specifically next year.
Sure, we'll, we'll get some information together. Just to, you know, bring to attention that the city has, we have, you know, we forgave 23,000, over $23,000 in sewer collections to businesses when COVID hit by a lot, most businesses have to pay per like occupancy. And so restaurants that had to pay 10 sewer units, we reduced to one or two. And so the city has contributed about $23,000 from the sewer fund to the local, to the businesses inside the city already. And we're going to work, Matt's been trying to work with them on all the other funding, but we will get some information together, try to find some funding and, and then maybe can brainstorm some ideas with you about how, what do we ask and how do we give it out?
I appreciate that. I look forward to that conversation. It's going to be really necessary. Thank you, Denise.
Yeah. All right. We are moving on to citizen and community group comments. Do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, we do. I have Joel Lidkey. I'm going to bring him in.
All right.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Good, how's it going?
Going good. Hey, just a quick question mainly for Denise. Hey, so the information, as I was looking through the packet here, it didn't really say precisely where that link would be. I want to make sure I get it out to the community through our resources so they know to get on the website and apply for that. When will you have that link available so I can get that out there?
Yeah, as soon as I have it, I'll get it to you. We're going to work on it tomorrow. We just wanted to be sure it was approved. I think it's going to be through our city grows application process that's new, but I will get the link to you as soon as we have it.
Okay, no, not everybody in the area is, is good with, with technical proficiencies. Is there a way for them to apply for it in person as well?
No, it's online only.
Online only?
Yep.
Okay, is there any issues if we offered up our, our location to help people that don't know how to use it for us to apply on their behalf? If they're, if they're giving us the information?
No, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
If you guys want to help them, that's, that's great.
Awesome, okay. I just want to make sure we have the right, you know, avenues for everybody as well.
Yep.
Okay, I'll look forward to the link then. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get it hopefully tomorrow, but it might be Wednesday morning.
Sounds good. As soon as I get it, I'll throw it up there and start getting it out as quick as I can.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the line?
No, I don't see anybody else. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, that's that part. Now we're at mayor and council reports and comments. Do I have anything from the council that'd like to comment? No? Anybody?
Yeah, just, again, thank everybody, thank staff. You know, these are, this year has been tough on everybody. Yeah, but this community just keeps fighting and, you know, we're, we're, we're making the right steps to, you know, help this community and I just really appreciate all the hard work. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Well, Paul?
I just wanted to shout out again to the American Legion. I had no clue that they'd been around for 100 years in Estacada. They've been great supporting my family and my kids if they've gone through the service. And I just appreciate their commitment to Estacada. Thank you for that. And, and thanks to all who contributed this evening as well, too.
Great, thank you, Paul. Katie?
Um, I'll just say happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And thank you to city staff, thank you Mayor Drinkwine and to the fellow counselors. We've had one heck of a year. I can't wait to see what 2021 has to bring me. Hopefully it's only good. But I, I just want to say to everybody, thank you for all you do year round and every year and. and especially around the holidays. Love your family, love each other, be kind, and I will see you next year. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that leaves me. Now, don't all sign off too quick. I know, I talked a long time, but I wanna thank all of you for doing the best job you can and supporting every group that you come from and live around and people that you represent. You all do a great job. And there's a lot of people here, and we can't always make everybody happy, but we try the best we can. And we hope we get it right in the new year. I wanna wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I wanna welcome all the new counselors coming in on, on the new year, so congratulations to you all. And I wanted just to add in this because it's the only time I've had to say it. Katie took away my thunder with the whole looking for financial assistance for the businesses downtown. I really want us to concentrate on looking as hard as we can to see if there's something in the budget we can squeeze to make enough funding to help these businesses. It's very important that our downtown stays vital and stays consistent the way it is now. I don't wanna see anybody leave. I don't wanna see anybody go. I don't wanna see anybody have to face that. So I appreciate as much as we can do and whatever we have to do, if, if I have to take a pay cut, so be it. No. But just, just put it all aside. I, I just love you guys. You guys are great. So thank you for being you and we'll see you in the new year. So thank you.
I just wanna remind everyone, he volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned, my friends.